Good afternoon. I'm going to call the city council meeting for, what day is today? March 20th, 2012, to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Murillo.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So moving on to public comment, I'm going to start by welcoming a group that's here from the Ukraine, from the Republic of Crimea. I'll get it right. It's part of the sister city alliance, right? So you learn how to pronounce things correctly. And the city of Santa Barbara and the city of Yalta has had a sister city relationship in the past, and that sort of, we've lost touch with one another, so there's been a renewal, renewed effort to bring that back, which is very exciting. And I'd like to invite the, and I want to acknowledge Gil Garcia, who was the person who brought this together this afternoon. I do have little certificates just of welcome to you. So I don't know if you'd all like to come up and say a few words, but you're welcome to do so at this time.
Yeah, if you'd like to come up, oh, okay. That'd be great. For interpreting, great.
Thank you.
Уважаемые господа! Для нас большая честь присутствовать сегодня здесь.
We are having a big honor to be present here.
И мы благодарим вас за приглашение.
And we are graciously thank you. We are thanking you for the invitation.
Мы также благодарим вас за возможность представить наш регион.
Likewise, we thank you for the opportunity to be able to introduce our region.
Автономную Республику Крым.
The Autonomous Republic of Crimea.
В ходе встречи, которая у нас состоялась здесь сегодня утром.
During the meeting which we had this morning.
Как я уже упоминал, затем несколько дней, что мы провели здесь, мы полюбили ваш город.
For these days that we spent in your town, we fell in love with your town.
But мы рассчитываем, что мы не только проведем здесь хорошее время, но и что оно будет с пользой для нас.
We count not only on simply having a good time here, but we are counting on this time, for this time to be of utility to us.
В частности, мы постараемся сделать все возможное, чтобы помочь возобновить активное сотрудничество между нашими городами поблизости, Yalta и Санта-Барбара, о чем уже сказала госпожа Mayor.
We will do our best to revive the sister city relationship between our towns, as the honorable mayor just said.
Еще раз заключение. Хочу вас поблагодарить за ваше гостеприимство.
And one more time, I'd like to thank you for your hospitality.
И в свою очередь пригласить вас посетить Крым.
And in turn, to invite you to visit the Crimea.
Мы будем счастливы быть вашими принимающей стороны.
We would be happy to be your hosts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and very honored that you have come. And it's been an honor to meet you and get to know you better from this morning.
Большая честь, что вы пришли.
And I'd like to invite the contingent, just again, a very simple but heartfelt appreciation from the city of Santa Barbara to you.
И я хочу опять же пригласить вас получить небольшой сувенир.
And actually, if you could tell the council your position, your governmental position, I think would be important.
Расскажите ваши должности совету.
And my name is Konstantin Bahariv.
Я депутат Крымского парламента.
I am a deputy of the Crimean Legislature.
Что в случае с американском, скажем так, в эквиваленте будет депутатом законодательного собрания Штата Калифорния.
Which would be equivalent to being an assembly member of California State Assembly.
В парламенте я возглавляю комитет.
And in the parliament, in our legislature, I am in charge of the committee.
По норматуристической деятельности.
For.
Okay.
The committee that.
Let me get my.
No, this is yours.
This is yours.
The committee of the organizational management, organizational management legislation. I am chairman, chairman of the permanent commission of the Supreme Council of the Autonomous Republic of Crimea on legislation, organizational management of the Supreme Council and on public relations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Спасибо большое. Просим вас.
This is the English facilitator that came with the group, so she'd probably like to say briefly what they're doing here, how they got here.
Sure, absolutely.
Distinguished councilman and Mrs. Mayor, it's a great pleasure to be here in the city of Santa Barbara. We've heard a lot about your city, and it's definitely an outstanding opportunity to visit California and Santa Barbara. I would like to personally thank our host organization, Sister City Board, for organizing this incredible program for us and for the group itself. We look forward to re-establishing cooperation with Santa Barbara and Yalta, and I hope that this day would bring an essential success to moving forward with bringing new cooperation and new friendship between our two cities and two countries. A couple of words about the program that brought the group here to the United States. It's an open world program. It's a congressional program that was established in 1999, and it facilitates in bringing young and promising leaders from post-Soviet countries in Eastern Europe to the United States of America. So they meet their counterparts, establish professional and cultural relations, and then move forward with new cooperation activities. So thank you so much for hosting us here in California and in the city of Santa Barbara. It's a great pleasure. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, may I? I just want to say, and Natalia?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. No, I'm, my apologies. Your name, please?
Katerina.
Katerina, would you come up? And maybe you can stay there, too. Would you come back? Perhaps, Katerina, this is a very distinguished group, and I would hope that those who are here today in the chambers and also watching would have the opportunity to get to know each of the six of you, but there's four more that would get to be introduced, and what their job is, it's really remarkable to know. And here we have Natalia, and maybe you could help us with some introductions, please.
Меня зовут.
Добрый день.
Меня зовут Наталья Скрепниченко.
Наталья Скрепниченко.
Я работаю в аппарате правительства Крыма.
And I am employed in the administrative services of the government of Crimea.
Работаю 14 лет, занимала разные должности.
I have been working for 14 years. I have been holding numerous positions.
Сейчас я консультант главного управления информационной политики.
Now I am working as a consultant of the chief directorate of the informational policy.
И я сейчас возглавляю группу мониторинга средств массовой информации.
So I'm currently, I'm ahead of the group that monitors mass media.
Very nice. And I, Madam Mayor, I think the ladies that came, they each should have an opportunity, just if it'd be all right, because I want to say, getting to know them has been really remarkable. Marty and Gil, thank you so much for making this possible, and the host families as well. But perhaps the others would do the same. I think they deserve it. They've come a long way. Do you realize they come from halfway, literally halfway around the world?
Вы осознаете, что.
From the exact opposite side?
С другого конца света, собственно говоря.
Совершенно другого.
С другого. It's entirely, entirely opposite.
Мне очень приятно находиться перед таким высоким собранием.
I am very pleased to be in front of such a wonderful gathering.
Меня зовут Маргарита Пономаренко.
My name is Margarita Ponomarenko.
Я руководжу аппаратом Верховного Совета Крыма.
And I am a person in charge of the administrative services of the Supreme Council of Crimea.
Может, от нас считывает 100 человек, а мы обеспечиваем полностью работу Крымского парламента.
I am in charge of a staff of 100 people, and we provide everything necessary for the Crimean Legislature to perform its functions.
Мы привезли вам дождь, и надеемся, вы увезти этого солнечного погода в Крым.
We brought your rain with us, and we are hoping to take from you the sunny weather back to Crimea.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and welcome.
Спасибо и добро пожаловать.
Hello, my name is Julia.
Hello, my name is Julia.
Я работаю экспертом комитета.
And I am working as an expert of the committee.
По санаторно-курортному комплексу.
For the recreational and the recreational treatment facilities.
Туризму и предпринимательству.
For tourism as well as business affairs.
Как вы в Санта-Барбари, вопросы отдыха и туризма очень волнуют краунчан.
Just like in Santa Barbara, the issues pertaining to recreation and tourism are of concern to Crimean citizens.
Крым имеет свою стратегию развития туризма.
Crimea has its own strategy for the development of tourist facilities.
И мы надеемся, что в будущем туристов из Америки будет у нас все больше и больше.
And we are hoping that in the future we will be seeing more and more tourists from the United States.
Welcome to Ukraine.
Oh, thank you so much, and definitely.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. We're going to have you and Kathy Janega Dykes get to know one another really well. And then I think we have.
Good, I'm seeing this.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I just, getting to know each person is so, it's about friendship, right?
Мы будем счастливы познакомиться, познакомить вас с заведующим бюро по обслуживанию посетителей и конференций.
Всем добрый день.
Good day to all.
Меня зовут Ольга Сульникова.
My name is Olga Sulnikova.
Я работаю в аппарате Верховного Совета Автономной Республики Крым.
I work in the administrative services of the Supreme Council of the Autonomous Republic of Crimea.
И я возглавляю информационное управление секретаря Верховного Совета.
And I am ahead of the informational directorate of the Supreme Council.
Мои задачи, уходит организация освещения деятельности Верховного Совета.
My task, the task that I am performing, our organizational task to provide for the broadcast of the work of the Supreme Council.
И организация работы официального сайта.
As well as organizational, organizational work of the Supreme Council's website.
Okay.
Спасибо.
Thank you.
Спасибо всем.
We hope you enjoy the rest of your stay in Santa Barbara, and please stay as long as you'd like, or if you'd like to leave, you can leave, too. It's okay. People do that all the time. But thank you so much, and you honor, they do. They come, they go. But you do honor us with your presence, and again, I look forward to seeing whatever we can do to rekindle the sister city relationship between the cities of Santa Barbara and Yalta. So thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to other public comment. We have a couple of speakers here. Kenneth Locke will be followed by Burke, then Lynette Mayer, and then Jeff Bard.
My name is Kenneth Locke. On my website, I actually did a video, it's called "The Genius/Christ of Tennis." And I just did a video today called, I'm working with the idea of tennis in heaven. So the idea of how we were going to be playing tennis in heaven, and what I could be understood as a person who's kind of come down from heaven to actually provide everybody with the means for understanding how we play tennis in heaven type of situation. And I invite everybody to this. It turns out that, like the likes of, I think I made reference to Roger Federer, because he's the number one player. I have a page on my site called "The Soulless Economy of Tennis." And it turns out that Roger, like a lot of people, have done kind of like what Judas has done. And it turns out that Roger's relationship with tennis, it just doesn't add up to anything. He might be the first, but I'm sorry to say that he's among the last in heaven type of situation. So again, I did a video on this, and I'm hopeful that, you know, Easter time coming, everything, that Christians actually understand and kind of can put a little more effort into how they go about business here on earth, like how it's going to be going on in heaven. And right now, I just see a lot of Christians who are making an effort, but I'm sorry to say that effort's a little weak. Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Robert Burke. I have sent you an email. I think it's a very serious issues that are involved here. And I've asked the Community Development Block Grant Committee to review this issue, and they have decided to send it to you without holding a hearing. My request to you is that you send it back to them with directions that a review or a hearing occur. I can understand, and their statement to me was that they wanted, they thought it was appropriate for the city council to review this and to make a decision about what it is that I had to say in the charges that I made. My standing up here on the 27th, I think it is, that you will be reviewing this, to have a two-minute comment without having any comment from the other people regarding the charges that I had to say is contrary to our public policy of an open and a fair hearing. And if the, you decide that the community development and block grant people are not the appropriate people to send it back to, that it be sent to appropriate. People are being hurt, and taxpayer money is involved in that. And I regret standing up and challenging these people. It is not something that I'm comfortable with. But the other consequences of saying nothing are more dire as far as my own personal integrity is concerned would allow. So my request to you is that you pay attention, read the charges that I have, if you have not already, and make appropriate behavior. And again, the main issue for me is people are being hurt, and I was one of them. And the conditions that existed when I was at St. Vincent's, as well as people's self-help housing, remain. And so I do not want taxpayer money to support that, and I kindly request that you create some avenue whereby a full and open hearing could be held. I thank you kindly for your attention.
Lynette Mayer? Be followed by Jeff Bard, and then Rastamam Andrea will be the final speaker.
Councilpeople, thank you for a moment of your time. It's Lynette Lemir.
Oh, sorry.
But that's okay. You're the mayor.
I should still do it correctly. That's okay.
I'm honestly embarrassed, as a member of Santa Barbara and a landowner and a business owner, about the next thing I have to say, because those beautiful people are here. And I own Pure Joy Catering on Haley. I bought 111 East Haley four years ago now, and have a catering company there, and we host hundreds of events. Most of them are destination clients coming here to host events in Santa Barbara. And my clients walk to my building and park in the area, and the area is just solid homeless people. You can work by 12 of them just to get to your car, and my staff has to do that every day. And I have a number of female staff, and they're scared. And it's hard to get them to, you know, park and walk, and the clients as well are scared. And we try not to be a pest, you know? We try not to call the police unless it's an emergency. Last Tuesday, my receptionist, who's in the bottom area alone, there's the, homeless people always walk in the building, and this one has been in four times, and he is banging his cart against the walls and walks into the building, very hostile and totally nuts. And she's scared. She's pregnant. She calls 911, and they said, "There's nothing we can do. You're an open public business. There's nothing we can do." And so finally, someone came to her aid and shoved him out the door. He wouldn't leave. I came back 10 minutes later from lunch, and there was a commotion at the park, two doors down, you know, the park on Haley, right off of Anacapa. And I went down there, because obviously something big was going on. There's a bunch of cops, and that same man had beat up the park ranger, and he was standing there all bloody. And I said, "Well, this same man was just in my lobby 10 minutes ago, and this pregnant woman couldn't get any help," you know? And we try not to be a pest. We don't call. But they go poo and pee right in front of my window. They bring their pit bulls right up to the door, because they think it's funny to have the dog raging at us.
Ms. Mayor, I'm going to suggest, if you want to give me your contact info, and I'm going to have you connect with our restorative policing division that interacts with people who are homeless and who have other substance abuse and mental illness, and perhaps they can work with you.
We were asking for help, and the sergeant said to come and talk to you.
Sure.
He said he didn't have enough people on his tactile force to come to the calls that we made.
Well, I'd like to hear in more detail, perhaps after this, you know, perhaps we can talk offline in my office, and then have our restorative policing division assist you in your efforts here, because no one should feel unsafe going to and from where.
We have to lock our doors and not be able to conduct this.
Okay. So if you could go in the office, in the city council office, and perhaps arrange a time to meet with me, I would appreciate that. Okay? And then we can work something out. Thank you very much. Mr. Bard?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, I'm on the Supreme Council for the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee. And I can make that joke, because my grandmother is from Kiev, and I'm intimately familiar with the local Orthodox community and the Roman Catholic community, where we live in harmony, similar to our Irish friends. We have issues back home, but we won't go there. One of the characteristics of Ukrainian history is the uprising against the brutal Soviet dictatorship instituted by Vladimir Lenin and implemented by Leon Trosky's murderous Red Army. And many of my, actually, my friend Al Dammado in the Republican Party made great hay with Ukrainian voters in New York. Now, here in Santa Barbara, I am a Democrat. However, I study conservative literature, which resonates with my fondness for anarchist philosophy. And some of the anarchist kids out in Isla Vista and elsewhere around the university actually converse, you know, with some of these good old boy NRA-type guys around the issue of fighting bureaucracy. Now, as you know, through my rather indiscreet, heavy-handed hitting of the send button, I'm having a dispute within the ranks of the progressive community to help the homeless. That's not a secret. I am at odds with Reverend Asman in particular, and the cluster of apparatchiks around him who seem to think that it's very cute to have 15 to 20 homeless people with no toilets, no hand-washing facilities, no access to garbage cans, and no supervision whatsoever, except what I tried to provide, which was swiftly undermined. So that needs to change. If I was before the UN Refugee Committee, High Commission on Refugees, and you had people with no access to sanitation facilities, someone would lose their job. Thank you.
Andrea, be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and councilmembers. I guess I don't get four minutes, even though last week I was going to talk about the plastic bag, but it was going on too long. But I just wanted to say, I just, yeah, I wish we can be like an example and pass that plastic bag issue, because, you know, carpentry and other LA, it's, I have a friend that owns a health food store in LA, and it works out. And I know maybe for the tourists, it could be a little, but we could encourage them to get, we can maybe offer them free bags, and maybe they'll take, you know, learn an educational thing, and then bring it back to where they're coming from and start things in their town. But then there's something else I want to talk to you about, but it's kind of scary, so I don't know if I should talk to you about it in your office. But I get tired of seeing things like, I found this on a bench, and there's like, it's tagged, you know, west side. It's just stupid, like you're walking on station, sometimes I just pick up trash, and there's just, I get tired of seeing a lot of tagging everywhere, even awnings. If you take a white walk at Rockinook Park, sometimes you see tagging on rocks and awnings and everywhere. And I just think maybe the policies should change, like, because I heard there's a law that maybe the, like, if it happens at a home or something, the owners or a business, the business people have to clean it up. But I would think to prevent, to make, just maybe there should be an issue where you can have like the kids, like at-risk kids, clean things up, because it shouldn't be a burden on the city's finances or on like private businesses when people get out of control. And so I don't know if you consider like changing that policy. I don't know. And you guys have a hard job. Have a good day. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Peace.
That concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read. Go ahead, Brenda.
Item number two, introduction of ordinance for Police Department Annex Office Lease Extension. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the chief of police to execute an amendment to the police annex office lease with LL and A dash two, the owner and landlord of 222 East Annapremo Street, to extend the term of lease agreement number 20106 for an initial term of five years with one five-year option effective April 27, 2012. Item number three, resolution to apply for grant funding for construction of Mission Creek Fish Passage Project, Lower Caltrans Channel. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director or designee to apply for grant funds of $775,000 with the California Wildlife Conservation Board for the Mission Creek Fish Passage Project, Lower Channel. And item number six, loan application with California Department of Boating and Waterways, Marina One. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara requesting a $7.3 million loan from the California Department of Boating and Waterways for phases five through eight of the Marina One Replacement Project in the Santa Barbara Harbor.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. I know item seven, there was a request to pull off the consent calendar, any other numbers and the other items. No, if you could read item seven.
Item number seven, contract for design for corporate yard well replacement project.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I wanted to go into a little bit of detail for the sake of the public, because it looks like an awful lot of money to be drilling, to spend on drilling a well. And anybody who's done it recently thinks, oh, it's like, I don't know, $50,000, $60,000. and maybe they'll take, you know, learn an educational thing and then bring it back to where they're coming from and start things in their town. But then there's something else I want to talk to you about, but it's kind of scary, so I don't know if I should talk to you about it in your office, but I get tired of seeing things like, I found this on a bench, and there's like, it's tagged, you know, West Side. It's just stupid, like you're walking on station, sometimes I just pick up trash, and there's just, I get tired of seeing a lot of tagging everywhere, even awnings. If you take a walk at Rockinook Park, sometimes you see tagging on rocks and awnings and everywhere, and I just think maybe the policy should change, like, because I heard there's a law that maybe the, like, if it happens at a home or something, the owners or a business, the business people have to clean it up, but I would think to prevent, to make, just maybe there should be an issue where you can have, like, kids, like, at-risk kids clean things up, because it shouldn't be a burden on the city's finances or on, like, private businesses when people get out of control. And so I don't know if you consider, like, changing that policy. I don't know. And you guys have a hard job. Have a good day. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Peace.
That concludes the public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read. Go ahead, Brenda.
Item number two, introduction of ordinance for Police Department Annex Office Lease Extension. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the chief of police to execute an amendment to the police annex office lease with LL and A-2, the owner and landlord of 222 East Annapremoe Street, to extend the term of lease agreement number 20106 for an initial term of five years with one five-year option effective April 27, 2012. Item number three, resolution to apply for grant funding for construction of Mission Creek Fish Passage Project Lower Caltrans Channel. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director or designee to apply for grant funds of $775,000 with the California Wildlife Conservation Board for the Mission Creek Fish Passage Project Lower Channel. And item number six, loan application with California Department of Boating and Waterways Marina One. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara requesting a $7.3 million loan from the California Department of Boating and Waterways for phases five through eight of the Marina One Replacement Project in the Santa Barbara Harbor.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. I know item seven, there was a request to pull off the consent calendar. Any other numbers and the other items? No, if you could read item seven?
Item number seven, contract for design for corporate yard well replacement project.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I wanted to go into a little bit of detail for the sake of the public, because it looks like an awful lot of money to be drilling, to spend on drilling a well, and anybody who's done it recently thinks, "Oh, it's like, I don't know, $50,000, $60,000 to go down 700 feet," which it is. This well, however, is four times as big and has all sorts of sheathing that goes with it, so, Ms. Bjork, perhaps you could explain just a little bit, so people feel we're wisely using their money.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss. I'm Rebecca Bjork, Water Resources Manager. The item that Councilmember Hotchkiss is talking about is replacement of an existing well that's located near to the city's public works buildings. It's currently about 650 feet deep. It's failing. The casing has deteriorated, and sand is filling up the hole, so we need to re-drill it. We've recently drilled a couple of new wells in the city, and the project cost for them, depending on how much infrastructure is needed, in addition to just drilling the well, has ranged from about $1.5 to $2.5 million. Of that, about half a million is for the actual drilling of the hole, boring it. This is going to be a 24-inch or larger hole down 600 to 700 feet, and then it's going to have a stainless steel casing that will be through that whole length of that well. So it's a fairly, those two pieces alone are pretty expensive bits of operation. Then above ground, we have to put in the pipes and pumps and equipment to get the water from this well. It is one of the four wells that will be treated at the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant that's currently undergoing significant rehabilitation. So it will be piped to, the piping to take it there. Hopefully, we'll be able to locate it close enough to the existing well that we can take advantage of the existing infrastructure and not have to do too much additional work on that part.
Thank you very much. That's much clearer.
Mr. White, did you have a question?
Yes, I have. The, I notice in the, in the report that it speaks to a well siting study being part of the effort. I'm recalling that there has been concern about saltwater intrusion on the lower wells, and this is getting to be one of the lower wells of, in the, in the city system. Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, saltwater intrusion is a concern. We have a confined aquifer, which means that when we pump, it creates a depression in the aquifer, and it can pull saltwater into our freshwater aquifer. It's something that we're very aware of, both in siting and operating our wells. Unfortunately, the thickest and best-producing part of our aquifer is downtown, close to the ocean. It's just where the best sediments are. So it's a balance in terms of getting a well-producing well and staying away from the ocean. We have and are working with the USGS to do a three-dimensional modeling of our groundwater basins. It looks like the area where the well is right now is actually a really good place in terms of water production. The balance is how we operate that well. We have to be careful to use it at a sustainable rate in normal years, and then during periods of drought when we really need to pump hard, we watch very carefully to make sure we know where the water, the saltwater freshwater interface is, and that we're not pulling that too far in. In the drought of 1990, we did pull the interface in. We've had very little use of this groundwater basin since then, and it has been successful in pushing it back out again. Exactly where it is is always a little bit of question, you know? It's not like it's a straight line. It's increasing concentration of salts in the water, but we do watch that, and we're continuing to work with the USGS to improve that model so that we can get understanding of solute transport, how the salts move, and be able to better manage that. But it's really this balance of where to put the well that it'll produce enough water to make it worthwhile, but not be so close to the ocean that it has an immediate effect on saltwater intrusion.
And two other questions, Madam Mayor. So, and this is what is known as Basin One. Is that right, or is that the term that people are using now?
That's correct.
And then are there other wells, in terms of completing a well field for the long term, are there other wells contemplated to be either drilled or re-drilled at this point?
We have, as I mentioned, we have the four wells that go to the well treatment plant. All of those were installed about the same time. They're all reaching the end of their useful life, so we will, we will probably have an ongoing program over the next 15, 20 years of sporadically replacing wells. I think we're proposing to do one every three or four years to space it out, but we would expect to be replacing those. We've gotten a pretty good life out of these existing wells. The water is fairly corrosive to the casings, and the casings that were used were not stainless steel, so we are seeing those start to be deteriorated, but they are still working well enough for our current kind of use that we don't need an immediate replacement of them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
One more question. These, these wells are replenished through groundwater that is filtered down through the 700 feet and then settles in the aquifer. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, more or less, yes. It doesn't necessarily come from the surface. It, the subsurface aquifer sort of slams down, and so it will be recharged both from, for instance, Mission Creek is a good source of recharge to the aquifer, but it can recharge from the foothills and actually move through the subsurface sediments and go deeper and deeper as it moves into the city, as well as having direct recharge from the surface.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You don't need to vote on that separately. So do you have a motion for the consent calendar?
Move Consent.
They're moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes the consent calendar. Item number 12.
Item number 12, Airport Master Plan Initiation.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsdale.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Hard to believe we're starting a new master plan effort after having finished our previous master plan with the terminal project. Our airport planner, Andrew Berman, is going to give the presentation, and I do want to recognize John Clark, who is in the audience, who's our Airport Commission Chair, as well as Bill Gilbert, who is an Airport Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Karen mentioned, my name's Andrew Berman, and today's discussion will be about the new airport master plan effort. We'll talk a little bit about previous master plan efforts, why we prepare a master plan, guiding principles that we intend to use as a, as a guide in the preparation of the plan, and what we'll be doing in the future. Firstly, why we prepare a master plan is basically that not only is it sound planning, but it's also required by the federal government in order to participate in federal grants. The existing plan that we have, prepared in 2003, the Aviation Facilities Plan, is largely built out. The projects identified in it are all done, and we need to identify what the future of the airport will be moving forward from this new position. The master plan effort is funded primarily through FAA Airport Improvement Program grant, but Airport Department funds are also contributing in the environmental review phase. The airports had a number of master plans over the years. They began primarily as very broad, ambitious plans, and with the passing years became more oriented to Santa Barbara's slow-growth aesthetic. The Aviation Facilities Plan projects that we've completed recently to sort of pat ourselves on the back, the two big ones here are the runway safety areas, that was the creek relocation, and the shifting of the runway, and the airline terminal expansion, which is nearly complete. The existing plan layout is that, is shown on this map here. The new plan we propose to put the boundary between the specific plan and the airfield operations at Hollister Avenue. We feel that's more intuitive. It allows us to plan the airfield as a whole, and also it lines that boundary up with the coastal zone boundary. Oops, sorry. So what we've done so far is, back in October, the city council approved a contract with Kaufman and Associates, and December 7, we had a meeting with airport stakeholders to discuss what we'd like to see in the plan, and one of the recommendations from that initial meeting was that we identify guiding principles. The primary areas of interest are safety and the consolidation of like uses in like areas. For example, everything related to commercial air traffic on the south side of the runway, and everything associated with general aviation on the north side would increase efficiencies. This is where we are so far. We're just beginning public outreach, and our Kaufman and Associates has prepared an existing conditions report and aviation forecasts. We'll be moving on through the next several phases. This is a little graphic that shows how that works. Right now, we're at sort of the forecast on the flow chart. We will be soon having public meetings, which I'll talk about in a minute. The, this layout, it sort of reflects the chapters that we expect in the master plan, and so we're sort of flowing through piece by piece. This is approximate schedule. As you know, these things tend to wiggle a little, but we anticipate coming back to city council with a draft plan in April of next year. So we'll be spending the next 12 months formulating and doing outreach, and then after that, we'll follow environmental review. I want to expand a little bit on the public involvement. We have an advisory committee of key stakeholders. We'll be holding public workshops that will allow the general public to participate. We'll also be preparing handouts and engaging online, both through our website and social media. The master plan advisory committee is made up of representatives of local agencies, UCSB, City of Galida, City of Santa Barbara, of course, area residents, environmental groups, and of course, airport staff, and they recommended that we prepare some guiding principles. And these are the guiding principles. You have them attached, so I won't read them, but I want to go through them for the viewing public. There is safety and security, economic vitality, transportation, diversity, different modes of transit, being a good neighbor in the community, sustainability in our use of resources, environmental preservation, cultural resource protection. Now, we will, what we go from here is we'll be identifying deficiencies in the airport where we can improve, come up with different strategies for how to improve that, and identify alternatives, and those will be all addressed in the plan. Next week, we will be having our second advisory committee meeting, where we will discuss the deliverables from our consultants, the inventory and forecasts, and then that evening at 6:00 PM, we will have a public workshop. And that public workshop will be at the airport department's offices next to Elephant Bar. It's from 6:00 to 7:30 on Wednesday, March 28. And of course, everyone is, is welcome to attend. And with that, I just ask that we proceed with the recommendation that you formally initiate master plan proceedings and accept the guiding principles that were recommended by the Airport Commission. Thanks.
Thank you. And I see, Mr. Gilbert, would you like to come up and speak at this time?
Mr. Clark.
Or Mr. Clark, too. You're welcome to. He's chair. Mr. Gilbert, would you like to come up? And you just got engrossed in your notes right there.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Bill Gilbert, Airport Commissioner and member of the advisory committee. Our airport's like a city. It has police, fire department, property, buildings, genocides, administration, council, neighbors, and must provide services. Like a city, every so often you have to stop and consider how and what type of service will be needed in the next decade. You review what you've considered previously, evaluate where you are today, and then attempt to define future needs. Our neighbors have increased. Commercial and private aviation has changed. Site and building security measures have increased. Aircraft type changes, SLU requirements, city and state federal airport land use requirements, economic indicators, and a lot more will be reviewed and considered to formulate a master plan for you. It'll be a heady task, but it'll be well handled by the airport staff, consultants, the advisory committee with their various expertise, and the Ouija board. And in about a year, you will be presented with a master plan for the Santa Barbara Airport to continue to be the top-of-the-line service for the next decade. Thank you.
Thank you. To the council. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Ramsdale, what would you, Ouija board, as, let's say, three hot topics for the, the master plan?
I think-
Understanding that the Ouija board could come up with some other answers.
That's true. That's true. I think, at least from those of us that have been working on the airport for a long time, is focusing on general aviation. Commercial aviation has had its day with the last master plan, and now it's time to upgrade general aviation facilities. So I think that will be one of the most needed topics and interests from airport users. Airfield safety projects or needs, I think, are always something to look at, as well as have environmental, you know, issues generally attached to it. So I think you can look forward to some of that as well.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think it was on the slide presentation, but it is, there are questions that come up and comments come up frequently about the different property holdings, the different parts that are part of the airport system, and I don't believe, it doesn't appear to be part of the master plan, but it is, there are comments and questions that do come up from time to time. I wonder if you could, maybe for the public's benefit, talk a little bit about the surrounding areas and the properties that the airport has under control.
Okay. Our property north of Hollister Avenue is generally what most people ask about, and it is our commercial industrial zone property. It's about 100 acres, and it's referred to as the specific plan, and that was approved in 1997, and it established light industrial use zoning for that property. And as you probably know, there's 15 acres kind of central to that that has, we've tried unsuccessfully since 1997 to develop, and there's been interest by major retailers, who I won't mention, but, who are interested in that property. Our last direction from council was to pursue a light industrial, a small type of building use for that 15 acres, which we are pursuing. We'll look back to you probably within the next month or so. So anyway, that's not included in the master plan. We're focusing on the aviation-related facilities. The specific plan, I think, is a pretty good general guideline for the commercial industrial development on the north side of the airport. I don't know if I completely answered your question, but-
That was very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Talking about general aviation, when I think of commercial aviation, I sort of know what we would do to lure or attract increased traffic, but when we talk about general aviation, I have no idea. Is there something we can really improve so that we become a more attractive destination for general aviation?
There's a lot we could do. The facilities for general aviation, you know, basically they are occupying World War II hangars, T-hangers that are probably 40 years old. So the facilities are aging and not in very good condition. Our two fixed base operators, their leases expire in 2013, and then you've approved one extension till 2016. But in order for them to put a major investment in the property and really have first-class general aviation facilities, they need a longer-term lease, and until we know the configuration for the general aviation side of the airport, it's hard to figure out what we put out with an RFP to attract top-of-the-line FBOs.
We're a FedEx sort of mini hub right now. Is that correct?
I don't know if we're a mini hub, but we do have Federal Express as well as a couple of other freight haulers that use the airport. The Amper Sam property, as you probably know, FedEx has, in recent years, consolidated their activity over in that building. The Amper Sam building will also, that lease will expire in 2018?
Yes.
In 2018. So we need to plan for that property as well. It's about 20 acres that that encompasses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Madam Mayor, just looking over the guiding principles, it feels right. I mean, it really looks like, it reflects the fundamental values that are in operation there in the airport now and want to continue forward. And also, I just want to take a moment and commend you, Karen, and with Hazel at your side and the Airport Commission taking care of your back, and, you know, you've done a great job. I mean, you know, watching the airport's specific plan being part of that and seeing that come into fruition and now being implemented, little piece at a time, very judiciously, to make sure that the revenue stream continues to be whole, and, you know, with council supporting you, and then to see the, the facilities just significantly improve, you know, the taxiways and all that work with the- know, the taxiways and all that work with the restoration and, and then the terminal itself, great work. And I'm hopeful that the, that that magic continues, you know, that you're able to really use it. You've used a public process so well in engaging the stakeholders early and often, and that has seemed to be a real big part of the secret to your success. So I'm going to make a motion, but I'd like to hear you comment a little bit on the public process part of this and how you envision that going forward. But I'm going to make the motion first so that I can listen carefully. I move that we initiate the preparation of the master plan for Santa Barbara Airport in review, or rather, and accept the Airport Commission's recommended principles to guide in the preparation of the airport master plan.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay.
The way we have structured the public process for this particular plan is we have the Stakeholder Committee, which is quite large, I mean, 25 different stakeholder interests, to give input every step of the way, as well as having public workshops along the significant points along the way as well. And we will, you know, bring back reports, as we did with the terminal project, to council, as well as Planning Commission and the other commissions that are involved in the process to keep everybody kind of moving along together. And I think you're right, that is, has been our success, is to be inclusive rather than trying to exclude people from the process, even if they may have a viewpoint different than we have or the plan has.
One of the guiding principles, including economic vitality, it says, "Continue to serve as a vital economic contributor to the region while maintaining the airport's economic self-sufficiency," is in there. I know we get lots of questions about, when is the non-stop direct flight to and from, you know, X-city coming back? Is that part of this, or is it more about just the infrastructure within the facility so that when those opportunities arise, we can accommodate them?
In a nutshell, that, that is true. But what the forecast looks at is really what activity is expected, not specific routes, but in terms of passenger use. And as you know, our grant money is based on passenger count, even though we may use the grants for, you know, general aviation, taxiways, or whatever, it's all tied to passenger counts. So, anyway, that's kind of what-
Okay. And I know you still continue to market as much as possible.
Yes, we do.
I know you do. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question. About 10 years ago, we had an FAA-certified repair facility, as I recall, out there, and I think we were only one of seven in the country, and I, as I remember, that supported a couple of hundred jobs. Any chance of getting that back?
That was, that facility was related to Tracor Aviation that did heavy aircraft maintenance and modification, and of course, that use has gone away, and now Amper Sam, you know, leases the hangars for corporate aircraft storage. So it really depends on the business that uses that facility or those certifications, not so much the airport's, and whether that type of business would find our airport suitable to do business on.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes, thank you very much. Moving on to Councilmember Committee assignment reports, if there are any. Ms. Murio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was at the MTD Board Meeting today, and one of the major issues there, the MTD owns property that Marburg leases, and there was a proposal for the living room to take over it. That's a youth music education program, and the MTD said no because of legal liability issues, youth in a, what used to be a bus yard, which is now a yard for Marburg, some of their equipment. So I, in a public arena here, if anyone has ideas about where these young people could play their music, I throw that out there, that the living room is looking for a space. Last night, I was at the youth council meeting, and next week, it'll come to us about formalizing them as an advisory group, and they're working out how to transition so that the students who have earned their place there can finish up their tenure. Also, yesterday, we took a site visit to Milpa Street to look at the Ortega and the Yanonali intersections, and I'm the liaison to the Neighborhood Advisory Council and the Transportation and Circulation Committee. Hot topic coming on Thursday, a joint meeting of those two groups, and there's a lot of opinions and concern about how we should improve those intersections on Milpa Street. A shout-out to Special Olympics, I was out there this weekend. Awesome to be there with the parade of athletes. And we were at the, a lot of us, at the Cottage Hospital meeting regarding the helicopter use last week, and they're forming a residents committee to interface with the hospital about the helipad issue and other issues that the neighborhood has to deal with being close to the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was at the Creeks Committee, where unfortunately, they turned us down cold when we requested that about $40,000 in measure B funds be used to help clean up the lagoon there. So they said, no, they wouldn't, wouldn't recommend that, so we struck out. There was a really interesting presentation on the channel that's being developed on Mission Canyon, or Mission Creek, and this unique design that we've apparently come up with. I don't know if it's possible to patent that, but we might do it because we might make some money off of that. It's so creative, and if you want to see it, best way to do is to go Mission Street with a bridge just east of the freeway and look up, and you'll see all these cuts and rest places for the fish and all. I mean, it's too complicated to go into, but it looks like it might really be successful.
Last week, at the Air Pollution Control District Board Meeting, there was an excellent presentation by the staff about the new rules related to pollution for freight ships going through the channel. And these are both, there's California rules pertaining to the type of fuel that can be used within, I think it's 24 miles of the coastline, that includes 24 miles west of the Channel Islands. There's also new EPA rules that deals with 200 miles off the coast of the United States. And so basically, freight ships that are coming from anywhere to the coast of California has to have three different sets of fuels in order to comply with those regulations. It has a direct and positive impact on a reduction of air pollution on our shores. It's actually quite amazing how much of our air pollution, both the greenhouse gas emissions and NOx fumes, are attributed to freight ships. So nothing we can do in terms of vehicle miles traveled or building, but a lot of it has to do with cruise ships. So if you get a chance to watch a repeat of the APCD meeting, it was the one major item on that agenda, really good information, I just thought I'd share that with you. Okay, and with that, we'll, we have a number of closed sessions, if you could read those.
Item numbers 13, 14, and 15, conference with legal counsel pending litigation.
Okay, and we don't have, we don't expect to report out at all from these three, so we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you.